Good evening. We've already opened our open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Welcome to visitors. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. It's also being recorded and will be on our website by tomorrow. Public participation policy BEDH has been reinstated so that we may hold public participation remotely, although we have no request this evening for that. And just a quick reminder to folks, if you are in the Zoom audience, please remember to keep your video and microphone off, but if you are an invited guest, please keep yours on. We do have some special guests this evening. Cassie?
I just wanted to check if Timmy was here. There was a number that called in that looked like it might be her. It might not be, but...
Tina, do you know if Timmy's here? I think Jane dropped off.
No, I don't see her.
Okay.
My connection was bad for a minute there.
Okay, there was a number that called in that ended in her, the same number, so I just wanted to check.
Oh, thank you, yes. And for some reason, my connection is quite unstable at times tonight. So if it happens again, Cassie, you could just kind of pick up where I tried to leave off. I appreciate it. Okay, important events. Brian?
You're muted.
Sorry, that's my first one in a while. The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee will meet only one time this month. That'll be tomorrow afternoon, 4:15 to about 5:15. The other important event that we have going on right now in the district is the district-wide, annual district-wide food drive to support the food bank at the Montague Catholic Ministries. Boxes are placed outside the front doors of the districts for schools while the schools are in session. I just wanted to let the community know also that there are additional locations around town that include the Montague Public Safety Complex at 180 Turnpike Road in Turner's Falls, and those boxes are available 24/7. And then in Carly's Texture Beauty Bar at 104 Avenue A in Turner's Falls, and those boxes are out or available during the business hours. I did also want to add that, just a reminder, that tomorrow for all students in the district is an early release half-day for professional development for district staff. So every student in the district will have a half-day of school tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a student representative report this evening? We have two student reps. I'm not sure, Tina, if one of them is joining us?
Yeah.
Haley is here.
Haley here, hi.
Oh, hi Haley, great, welcome.
Thank you. So we had an officer shop this past Thursday, which was very successful. Officer shop is a statewide conference for all of the officers of student councils across the state. Within our own council, we will be putting a box in the entryway of the high school to leave cards for Mr. Carter. If you would like to send Mr. Carter a card, you can drop one off in that box, which will be there until the end of next week. You don't need to put the address on the envelope. That will be filled out for you, but it's necessary to put a stamp on it. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks Haley.
Okay, in that case...
Bill has his hand up, Jane.
Yep.
I wanted to ask on the student reps, on behalf of the Six Town Regionalization Study Board, which I'm part of, if they are aware of the effort to look into combining two regions to make one mega-region, relatively speaking, and would they like to participate in the development of that starting right away? Or, and that would also include an invitation to any teachers who might come along with their students to participate in the development or interactions, thoughts of this whole process. And I know Deb Loomer suggested this a week ago or so. So she may be researching it too, but I thought, given the direct contact right now with a student rep, it would be a good time to introduce this and hear if there are any responses or immediate thoughts about this whole process, the regional, the recombining of Pioneer and Turner's. Thank you.
So I have not heard anything yet. This is the first I've been made aware of it, but I can certainly bring it up to the council at the next meeting, and either me or Audrey can let you know what they think, if that works.
That'll work great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Haley and Bill. Great idea, Bill. Okay, superintendent's report is next.
So I'd like to start off the superintendent's report by introducing a very special guest that we have here this evening. As the superintendent of the Gil-Montague Regional School District, it's my great pleasure to introduce Turner's Falls High School senior Isabel Farick as this year's recipient of the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence. Throughout her high school years, Isabel has challenged herself by taking honors courses since eighth grade algebra. She will complete her remarkable academic career at Turner's Falls High School, having completed five advanced placement courses, including successful completion of AP Calculus as a junior in high school. After 11th grade, Isabel has managed to achieve an exceptional grade average of 107 on a scale of 100. However, Isabel has excelled at much more than just academics. In the words of her guidance counselor Beth Fortin, "To say that Isabel Farick is a well-rounded student would be a gross understatement of her abilities and contributions to Turner's Falls High School." She's been a member of the high school music program throughout her high school years. Early in her high school career, she quickly started to exhibit a sincere personality and natural leadership ability. And she has been elected as class president for three years and has consistently demonstrated a collaborative approach to leadership as a student. Student council has been a big part of Isabel's life at Turner's Falls High School. She's one of the many dedicated student leaders in an outstanding class of 2021 who played an integral role in increasing student council membership and making it a welcoming place for all students. The council also goes to the MASC State Leadership Conference every year, and in one year that included doing a polar plunge to benefit the Special Olympics. At this event, they encourage teams to dress in costumes and to participate. High school staff still speak fondly of hearing that whistle blow and watching Isabel help lead her peers in their black leertards and blue tutus into the frozen Atlantic Ocean to raise money for an outstanding cause. The further that Isabel moved on in her education, the more she looked for opportunities to participate in enrichment activities over the summer months. As she matured, her career aspirations evolved from wanting to be an astronaut to wanting to study math with a focus on computers and engineering. She spent one summer working as an intern at Cooley Dickinson Hospital's IT department. She was responsible for creating a SharePoint site for IT support throughout the hospital, more specifically for medical professionals using new technology. She had the challenging of working with a new interface that she had never used before while learning about every piece of communication technology throughout the hospital. She also worked with doctors to install communications applications on their devices and teach them how to properly reformat documents. And despite all the time that she's dedicated to her rigorous coursework, the work of a class president, as a dedicated member of the music program and the tennis team, participating in and/or leading fundraising ventures for the school and community organizations, Isabel also frequently provided time to tutor struggling students. It's clear that Isabel Farick has left an incredible legacy of the example of what an exceptional student takes from and gives back to their school community. Isabel's first choice of colleges is MIT, the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. They would be lucky to have her on their campus, in their classrooms, and in their research laboratories. I have no doubt that she will continue to make the world a better place as she has done in our own school and community. I'm so proud to present Isabel Farick as this year's recipient of the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence. Congratulations to Isabel and her family. And Isabel, if you were here, I would hand this to you. Open it up, show everybody, and shake your hand. But in COVID times, we'll have to find a creative way to get a picture because while I've done this many times as a principal, for me, you're the first recipient for me as a first-time superintendent, and it would be very important for me to be able to have a picture, to be able to hang in my office. So I would appreciate that when things die down a little bit, we'll get together in person and get a picture. And congratulations.
Thank you, and I think we're joined this evening by Beth Fortin, who is Isabel's guidance counselor, and Joni Bernard, who is the principal. I don't think Mr. Carter was able to join us this evening. Would either of you like to say a few words as well?
Ms. Bernard, I'll defer to you.
Well played, Beth.
You may go first, Ms. Fortin.
Thank you. Isabel, I don't even know what to say other than I am so incredibly proud of you and everything that you have done, particularly for student council and for your peers. And I am just so honored to know you, and I'm thinking I have got my fingers crossed for MIT. I know it's coming. It's gonna happen, and I'm so proud of you. Doesn't matter what you do. You're an amazing young woman who is gonna make your mark on the world, and it is our pleasure to have worked with you. So, thank you.
So Izzy, I am thrilled to have met you. You're one of the first students I got to meet in my whole interview process, and you really challenged me, and I could see the passion you had for Turner's Falls High School when I was being interviewed. So I'm really excited to have had the opportunity to actually work with you on student council. And as a student, I see your passion for learning. I see your passion for your school and community, and I know that you're gonna do wonderful things with your life. I really feel strongly like Ms. Fortin does. You have a phenomenal chance at MIT. Whatever you do, you're gonna be successful in. And please keep us in mind to come back as one of those successful TFHS alums in Ms. Fortin's career fears that she's running, because we would love to have other students see what success you've become. Very proud of you.
And Isabel, don't be surprised if one of us is reaching out to you four years from now, five years from now, wondering whether or not you're gonna come teach mathematics at Turner's Falls High School.
And Isabel, would you like to say anything?
Sure, um, wow. Thank you so much. I was like getting emotional with all the words everybody said. I didn't realize that it was gonna be like a whole big like speech this evening. I was like, wow, oh my gosh. I really appreciate everyone kind of helping me out with stuff. I wouldn't have been able to do all the things that I've done without Ms. Fortin and without like the support of our staff at the school. Like my internship at Cooley Dickinson wouldn't have happened without like the school and the teachers within the school like giving me that opportunity and all the support I've received to keep my grades up high and all the opportunities for me to be able to like do all the fun activities that I do. I just really appreciate everybody. I wish Carter could have been here tonight because he is very important to me. He'll probably be a teacher that I talk to well beyond after high school. I just heard from him today. I think he's doing good. And just thank you, everybody. I super appreciate it. And the hope for MIT is just strong tonight, so let's hope.
We're definitely rooting for you. Congratulations again, Isabel.
Yes, congratulations from all of us.
It's always a bummer in the superintendent's report, though, to start with the fun stuff. It would have been better to do the stuff at the end, because now we get into the stuff that's not so fun. And Isabel, you're not compelled to stay for the entire meeting, but you're more than welcome to hang around. So the governor today, shortly before the meeting, took a step back from Phase 3, Part 2 to Phase 3, Part 1, which has significant reductions for the number of people who can be in restaurants, inside and outside activities. And it's clear that the governor is taking steps to begin peeling back places that have proven through research to be places that can be contribute to the spread of the virus. And so I would encourage everybody to take a look at those orders and what it looks like. I apologize, I don't have it here with me because it came out shortly before the meeting. From the weekly COVID public health report from December 3, Key Towns, Montague, had 11 cases. Greenfield went from 19 the previous week up to 30 cases. Sunderland went from 16 down to 12, and Orange is up at 8. And those are the towns that in our region and abutting us have the highest case counts. The state had 34,793 cases in the last four days, and Franklin County went from 65 cases up to 95 cases in the last four days. As far as our update on facilities, I will share with the school committee, we did get an updated report that will be slightly different. There are a few projects now that have been completed at many of the schools. And so I will forward you an updated report as a committee, just so that you have access to the report as we receive it later today. Basically, there are three places through the three elementary schools. Air testing has been done on Hillcrest. Air testing has been done on Sheffield. And we expect to have those reports once they finish the air testing on Gil. They were slated to do a repair today. They believe it will carry into tomorrow at Gil, which means they should be able to do air testing by Thursday. We anticipate getting the air testing reports for the three elementary schools by Friday. At the high school, they, you may remember me having a conversation with the committee about the Capitol Project, and there's a computer system at the high school that runs everything from the alarms to the heating system to electricity and the way that that flows through the meeting. So it's basically like the brains of the physical infrastructure of the plant. And that had not been kept up, and once that system was turned back on as the work was being completed, it resulted in, basically, I'm putting this in layman's terms, it resulted in three pages worth of check engine lights. Now, I'm saying that because not each of those lights is an indication that there needs to be major repairs. In some cases, it was a matter of sort of resetting the light or the trigger. And over the course of the last two days, that list has gotten shorter and shorter. And what Director Cummings now needs to do is to work with the two contractors, Jamrog, which is working on the HVAC system, and SNE, which oversees the computer system, to make a determination as to which things SNE needs to come back in and complete so that Jamrog can finish their work. Because what we don't want to do is be spending money on things that could be resolved as a result of the computer system actually working the way that it's supposed to work. So we anticipate getting feedback from them early next week on the high school, but that's basically what's delaying air testing at the high school. A lot of the work that's been completed, and you'll see it in the second report, this significant amount more work that has been completed, that certainly has resulted in improved ventilation in many of the areas of the high school. But without having that system working, we're not gonna get adequate, we're not gonna get accurate readings, and the system itself may not function the way that it's supposed to. In addition to the fact that when this is done, it'll be a matter of using those check engine lights the way we always should have to maintain each of the systems in the building and maintain that system going forward. So the Capitol expense, again, I can't thank the towns of Montague, Gil, and Irving for their contributions to be able to help us move this project along, because it is definitely a long-term fix. As far as staffing, we still have the Food Services Director posted. We are waiting to bring onboard the medical waiting room staff until students come back into the building, and those positions remain posted. We have posted, still have posted, a special education teacher position to be split between Gil Elementary School and the middle school. One permanent position for food service and one long-term substitute. And they are in the process of interviewing for two long-term substitutes at Sheffield Elementary School for approved leaves that are due to be coming up in a few weeks. As far as additional information, I did want to add, Melissa Bednarski and I completed the application for, basically, it's called the CLIA application to be licensed, basically, as a mini lab to be able to do the COVID testing, the rapid binax testing. And thank you to Melissa for completing that process, and we did get approval for our CLIA application, and now training can begin, and we anticipate having the rapid testing on our campuses by the time we return from the break. So sometime after the holidays, we should have testing capacity at each of our schools. And that's it. I told you that, you know, when you get into the other parts of the superintendent's report, it's not as fun as honoring a student who has accomplished so much, so I'm sorry for ruining your day.
We'll just hold that good thought, and we'll be fine.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Haley?
I'm so glad to hear about testing in the school. I want to jump up to that. Any idea how much capacity we'll have?
I'm not sure, Melissa, if Melissa's here on the call and is able to jump in. I do know...
Melissa is here.
There she is. She's like, you have Halloween-style lights on you, so it looks cool.
Nice.
I'm actually really not sure what the capacity, you know, we have to put in for how many tests we want to receive, and right now, we're still going over those numbers on how many we really want to are going to be able to do, you know. You know, we have a lot of set of protocols to actually come up with as well, because we're not gonna test students that arrive to school with symptoms. These are students or staff that develop symptoms while in the school day. So more information will come out as we get these protocols ironed out. And actually, the nurses and I have a big meeting tomorrow to discuss a lot of this.
Haley, I had initially put on the application a relatively arbitrary number of 300, and then realized that I should leave that decision to the nurses as healthcare professionals and shouldn't be making that decision as an educator.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else have anything for Michael, or I mean Brian? Okay, I guess we're good then. Moving on to the Business and Operations Report, Joanne?
Yes, Fiscal 22 Budget. We are moving along, trying to get that put together for you. We did meet Superintendent Brian Beck, School Committee Chair Jane Oaks, and School Committee Member Timmy Smith, and I all met with the Finance Committee and Select Boards of the Town of Montague and the Town of Gil to discuss the budget. So we talked about how our budget is going this year and operationally, how things are going, and the challenges that we're all facing. A brief summary of what we anticipated for Fiscal 22. And you know, I've talked about our revenues being much lower, not seeing the increase that we did last year for our revenues. Part of that is because the towns just don't have the capacity to give us a 4.5% increase, and we are not anticipating a large amount of state aid, primarily because our enrollment has dropped so significantly this year. So you know, it's gonna be a tough year, but we're putting it all together, and then we'll bring it to you to look at it as a whole, once it's all put together, see how far off our expenses are from our revenues. So the other thing that we talked about with the two towns is the Montagues Affordable Assessment. So Montague does a calculation to figure out how much they can afford to pay for education each year, and then they provide us with that number, and it's an increase from the prior year. And Gil has went along with that each year. You know, they've not created their own affordable assessment calculation. They've said, you know, for the most part, they've been able to work with Montague Affordable calculation. But some years, Gil sees a big increase, and some years, it's a big decrease, simply because of the way the calculation has to work. So I put on my report, I'm showing what the historical calculations have added up to, what assessment increases. So at the bottom, you see Montagues' calculations. Back in Fiscal 16, they had a 2.6% assessment increase. And then each year after that, it's been closer to 4 or even 5%. And that's all stayed right in line with what their Affordable Assessment is. But then if you go to the top of that chart, you'll see that Gil's Affordable Assessment has been up and down considerably. The first year Fiscal 16, and the last year on this chart Fiscal 21, it's up around 9%. But all the rest of the years, they're quite low, you know, less than 1%. And even in one year, it was a decrease. So once you add all of that together, and you find the average, it's right around 3.5%. So overall, their assessments are a little bit lower than Montagues', but they're more sporadic. And part of the reason for that is also, each of the towns also belongs to the tech school. And so the tech school is the other piece of education for them, and as one district might go up for them, another one might come down. Because when the state's looking at education, it's looking at education as a whole for that town, not for a single district. So the Montague Affordable Assessment this year is close to 1% increase. So as you can see, that's completely, you know, way different than what it's been in the past. So we're gonna have to work with that and see what we can do for the budget. I am hoping that the state does not use the current year enrollment for Fiscal 22's budget, and that way, we'll at least get something from Chapter 70. Our future budget meetings are down below that chart. So on December 16, Keith and I will be meeting with the Montague Capital Improvement Committee to review the capital requests and current projects. And then on January 12, we'll bring you the preliminary Fiscal 22 budget to present to school committee. On the 19th, we'll have our working session. I'm not sure how that works remotely like this, but we've been doing that each year since I arrived. And then on the 26th of January, we'll have to vote a preliminary budget. Any questions about the budget?
Excuse me, it's Timmy.
Oh, hi, Timmy. Hi, Timmy.
Hi, I just wanted to make a clarification for my conscience sake. The meeting that you referenced in your report, Joanne, about meeting with the Select Board and Finance Committees of both Montague and Gil?
Yes.
And the district was there. You referenced, and it was referenced by someone else in a comment or note that they sent around to various people. I was not there, in my conscience, as a school committee member. I am a school committee member, but I was not voted to or requested to attend the meeting to represent the school district. I was there as a member of the Gil Finance Committee. And I just wanted my colleagues on the school committee to know that I wasn't being presumptive and taking over something that I wasn't asked to do.
Thank you.
I just didn't want to leave you out, Timmy, because I knew you were there.
Oh, I was. That's okay. I just didn't want people to think that I was there in that school committee capacity. It was... It was you Superintendent Beck and Jane that attended in that capacity. And I was there as a Gill Finance Committee Member.
Thanks, Bill.
You're muted, Bill.
Thank you, Brian. Timmy, I just wanted to thank you for coming forward with that. Because my first question when Joanne mentioned your name was, was she there as a school committee person or as a finance committee person? Because I assumed from the news report that you were there for finance. But in any event, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I just feel better having it clarified. It's, it's important to me at least.
Joanne?
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the budget process? Any concerns? Anyone want to meet with me and talk about the budget?
I have to, right?
You will have to, yes.
Well, there's, so there's one thing that I do want to add to the committee. Every, we have another phone call with the commissioner tomorrow. And while, while we haven't gotten anything other than a verbal assurance, every school district in the Commonwealth is seeing declining enrollment. And so they, they are at least making a verbal commitment to hold districts harmless with regard to chapter 70. So it's unlikely that they're going to use the depressed numbers to do the calculation for chapter 78, but we haven't gotten something in writing yet to commit to that.
Bill?
On, on that topic of school population, is it, can you refresh us as to whether or not the decline was pre, was previously known to be about to happen or is this directly related to the COVID issue? Are people opting to go to, for example, homeschool and thereby are dropping out of the population?
Yeah, from across the Commonwealth as well as here, there are a number of families who opted to go to homeschooling. There are some families who decided to do some private schools or in some cases online schools. So there have, and that's been directly related to COVID. I think that we probably, certainly we would have left school choice open had we not been in the COVID situation. And I think we may have had an opportunity to actually increase our enrollment and I hope to get back to that in the very near future and put that back on a future agenda in January to discuss school choice. Because I think we have an outstanding school district and I believe that we can compete with other school districts to pull more students into our district. So I, this was directly related to COVID. From everything that I can tell, again, I'm, I'm, I'm still new here, but I know that the enrollment in the district seems somewhat stabilized for the foreseeable future.
Okay, so I'm going to move on. The next item in your.
May I?
Timmy?
Yes, if I could, follow up on Joanne's comment about the budget. And I'd like to point out that the Town of Gill at its town meeting a couple of weeks ago or whatever it was, that cold, raw day, voted to go along and reaffirm the budget for the current year that we are in. And in order for the Town of Gill to do this, my understanding is that it was necessary to tap into the Education Stabilization Fund. And every year for a number of years, we've been putting money into the Education Stabilization Fund for an urgent situation. And it happened this year when we had to go in some $40,000 in order to meet the assessment to the Town of Gill. This leaves $117,000 in the stabilization fund. In other words, we took out just over 25%. This was a, is a concern to a number of people. I don't know the answer, but it can't go on and on. I know that the Town of Montague has had some businesses or whatever go into the industrial park which has raised their tax base. And when they figure out their affordable assessment, they work on their tax base and a certain percent of the total tax income goes to the town and a different percent goes to the school district. And Gill at this time does not have an industrial tax base to help us out. And it's just, I know Joanne is aware of that and I'm sure Superintendent Beck is, but I just wanted to bring it up to the surface so that it reinforces the awareness. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Timmy. That's, that's one of the things that I was trying to point out with the chart that shows the assessment increases over the past six years. So this year it was a huge increase for the Town of Gill at 9.3%. But the four years prior to that, the total increase was $60,000. So you know, it's, it's a much smaller increase each of those years. It's very small. And I think the tech school increase might've been a lot larger for the Town of Gill in each of those four years. But this year was huge. And so maybe some of that education stabilization funding was being put away based on a, a negative assessment, you know, a decrease in the assessment one year or less than 1% a couple of those years. But we appreciate that the Town of Gill did approve that. So and, and we also know that, you know, they're not sure they'll be able to manage with the Town of Montague's Affordable Assessment in future years. So, you know, we just need to be aware of that and keep watching it.
Thank you.
So the next item is budget transfers from October. Those are included just for your review only. If anything crossed DESI function codes, then those were approved at a prior meeting and they would be included in that list. And the last item is the Town of Gill building lease. So I provided last, at your last meeting, a copy of the Town of Gill building lease. And I shared it with the attorney who came back with some recommendations on some changes. So they are included here for you. There's a couple of whereas clauses at the beginning of the lease where it sounded like there was a dispute 20 years ago. I'm not sure what that dispute was about, but I'm not aware of the dispute. And so the attorney suggested that we remove the dispute language. So there are two whereas clauses that mention the dispute, the fourth and the fifth one. And then the other item is something that we changed on the Town of Montague lease this past year, which was the snow and ice removal. In, in the lease, it says that the town is responsible for the snow and ice removal and they have not done that in my time here. So we should change that language to say that they will still assist if we have an emergency and we need their, their help, but we are responsible for the snow and ice removal. And so I'm showing the language that we would remove and the language that we would add in there for you. And so if the committee finds these changes acceptable, I can forward them off to the Ray at the Town of Gill. And we can try to work through the different language changes in the lease and hopefully get it back to everybody for a vote soon.
Okay. Bill?
I guess I'm not muted for a change. The snow removal thing is ancient. In fact, when the towns decided that the schools, the district should take care of their own because it was, it was a budget dispute and and who was going to do what. And, and both towns preferred not to do it. So congratulations if we can get it to be turned back. The other thing about the the premises and disputes, I'm sure that's got a history too. But it isn't, it can't be a very big one. And I think it's passed because the town has done a lot in the past to respond to those things. That's my thought on, on both of those issues.
Thank you, Bill. So we looked at the original lease last time and these changes were suggested and now Joanne has put them in a, on a paper so that we can see how they're worded. Any suggestions or if it's acceptable, we will just say that's fine to change it. And then once the lease is completed in the changed form, we will vote on it.
Right. Once, once the Select Board has reviewed it and they agree to the same changes, then we'll bring it back for a vote. Or any other changes anyone would like to make?
Right. Anything else before it goes to the Town of Gill? And once we do vote on it, that is one thing that all of us have to sign individually. So then we'll let you know when that's ready to be signed as well, right, Joanne?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the only other thing I have is the capital budget, but I think that is in business. Yes. So we'll wait on that.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. In that case, if we move along, school committee reports, we have a warrant subcommittee approval to vote on. It's for the Gill Montague Regional School District AP warrant, which is accounts payable. Those are the bills coming in. It's warrant number 3112. It's dated 12/9/2020 in the amount of $214,205.92. I will entertain a motion to approve. So, second? I think I got Haley as the motion and Heather as a second. Any questions or comments on the warrant? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Next, moving on to the business, we have Principal Menard joining us this evening and she's going to give us some more information about the Innovation Pathways Programs, an update, which is very exciting. Welcome, Toni. You're mute.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. And I am going to bring up.
We both earned our you're muted t-shirt tonight, Toni, just so that you're aware.
I know, I know. That's really interesting. Why is it not there? I have it. Excuse me for just a second. That's strange. Okay. Let me just minimize because it's up. Okay, let me try again. I'm going to have it up. And let me bring this, let me share. Here we go. Okay, can you guys all see that?
Yes.
Okay, let me just get into present. All right. So thanks for having me. Unfortunately, Christine LaMose was going to join me. But she is unable to tonight. She's a little under the weather. But I'm really excited to present this to you tonight. It's an abbreviated version. I'll take questions at the end if you have any. But Ms. Fortin and myself and Ms. LaMose presented this, this is abbreviated version of this. But we presented it in November to all ninth graders and their families and guardians. And then Ms. Fortin and I, last week ago today, actually, presented it to all the ninth graders in the whole school meeting. Because this is an opportunity for our current ninth graders. So I am thrilled to announce, and hopefully you saw on the paper, that we were awarded Innovation Pathways in healthcare and social assistance. And we're the first high school in Franklin County having an innovation pathways. And there's a lot of reasons why we're doing this. Number one is for the children to offer them a lot of different opportunities. And you guys are talking about getting those numbers back up. This is one way that we can do that is offering innovative, creative, out of the box thinking. So we are awarded this pathway in 2020. And DESI has created these pathways and actually to help public schools. And they're defining these pathways as different structures within public state high schools designed to connect students in a specific area of employment that's in a demand in their specific area. So I'll get into a little bit, but we're looking at what careers are in demand in Franklin County. So Ms. Fortin and I worked very diligently on this many, many, many hours last year. And we partnered with Mass Higher Franklin Hampshire Workforce Board, who is incredible. And we will continue that partnership with them, along with Community Action Pioneer Valley. Okay, so what the heck does this mean? Why are we doing this? Okay, so the students are actually going to get a designation like an emblem or an embossment, I'm not quite sure what it looks like, on their diploma. And this recognition is seen very valuable as our local colleges and local industries and businesses. They're well aware of what this means. Because they know in order for these students to receive this, they're going to do a hundred hour internship during school hours, their senior year in healthcare and social assistance. The students, we would work with our partners that I just told you about, and they would help match up our students and their interests. So this pathway is really for students that run the whole gamut. So it's, it's for students that want to go on to a four-year degree. It's for students that want to go on to a two-year college, community college. Also for students that want to open their own business and students that want to start working right away, right from Turner's Falls High School. It really meets those, all those needs because it would be differentiated in their internship. Okay, so what's really exciting and we're so excited to announce that each student in this pathway would also graduate with three certifications. One is a CPR certification. And Ms. Fortin found this incredible study by Indeed's Career Path that was published this year. And they identified as a CPR certification, the number one most requested certification by employers this year. They'll also graduate with a first aid certification. Indeed's Career Guide that I just referenced valued that as the number six most requested certification. And they'd also leave with a certification in OSHA, which stands for Occupational Safety and Health Administration Certification. These students would complete these certifications in their health class in their 10th grade year. Oh, I'm sorry, went the wrong way. Okay, so why did we decide healthcare and social assistance? So remember at the time Superintendent Sullivan was still with us and Ms. Fortin and I sat down along with Franklin Hampshire Workforce Board and really looked and studied their labor market blueprint. And in this blueprint, the Franklin Hampshire Workforce Board identified the top three leading occupations in our region. This is in the order of the percentage of open jobs they have that Mass Hire determined. Number one is healthcare and social assistance. So if you look down below, they define that as 17, over 17% of the available jobs in our region. So hence, that's why we made the decision. I am thrilled to announce that this year Ms. Fortin, Ms. LaMose and I are working on advanced manufacturing application. And we're really excited because we completed part A and we have now moved on to part B. So hopefully this time, you know, well, not this time, but in the spring, in the spring, hopefully I'll be coming back to you announcing our advanced manufacturing innovation pathways. So we would have two if that's the case. Okay, so different supports that we're offering the students as they go through this path. We would provide the transportation to their internships. We would use the vans that we have that you guys see parked out front, the secondary schools. And if they're working after school hours, then they would be responsible for providing their own transportation back. We're going to be offering extra academic tutors. These types of things are going to be funded somewhat from grants that we're getting and also we are going to be building that into our budget. And also we are going to be building that into our budget as they come about and we need those. These students will, in the pathways, will be receiving regular presentations from industry leaders. I went, I graduated from a public school in Ohio and I was never given the privilege of being exposed to a lot of career-oriented people in the fields that could tell me exactly what it's about. And that's what we want to do for these students. So they can hear and say, oh, you know what? I would love to do that part of healthcare and social assistance, or you know what? That part's not for me. That's our responsibility to help them navigate that. Ms. Fortin had an incredible career fair plan that I invited Ms. Eric already to come back to in future years. But it's for past graduates of Turner's Falls High School. And we, Ms. Fortin arranged for a wide range of people, from business leaders to people that are CFOs of businesses, to people that have very high positions in organizations and businesses. So for our students to see what their own community members have done, and they definitely can do the same thing. We are working hard. I think Ms. Fortin, we have the training either this week or next week. We're using a platform called MEEFA Pathways. And that actually is a free platform that is very robust. And it's a system, if anybody's heard of Naviance, it's very much like Naviance. And it's a platform where students can store all of their information throughout their whole years. And it's, part of it's going to be My Cap Curriculum. And in that curriculum, the students are going to be exposed to career awareness, career exploration, and career immersion. It's really getting to know themselves, what their passions are, what their skills are, and really figuring out how those skills and passions can turn into a job after they graduate. And all of this will be working with Mass Hire and Community Action. They will actually be our contacts and really work closely with myself and Ms. Fortin to make, and the students, excuse me, to make those placements for the internships. So just want to review this. Every student in this pathway would receive those three certifications, CPR, first aid, and OSHA. They would have a resident, a recognized designation on their diploma. That's recognized both by colleges and by industries and businesses. In their junior year, so beginning this year and all the way through, they're, they would take some required classes and they'd also have some choices. But their junior year, they would have a class called Gateway to Career Success. It's kind of like what it sounds like. It's really preparing those students for their internship the following year. You know, how you dress, how you act, what the expectations are. It's going over work-based plans that they will be using on a regular basis their senior year to complete that one hour, excuse me, 100-hour internship. This opportunity was open to every single freshman here. There is no limitations. I am thrilled to say that we've had six students show very strong interest. So we would like to go ahead and instead of, since we were limited to five students of all six students, after their interview process and possible acceptance, we would like to accept all six of those students. I'm thrilled to say that we got interest from Montague students, Irving students, and Gill students. So very excited to say that. Acceptance into this program is not at all based on academic performance or if a student has an individualized educational plan or a 504. It's really based on their passion, their interest. How do they overcome any kind of obstacles in their way? How do they persevere? So we really need students to commit and finish this program. So that's the whole point. Okay, so what do they have to do? They have to do a short application process. With Ms. Lamos and I, last week had the thrill of actually making out the application. And I dropped those in the mail to those six interested students on Friday at the post office. And they have until shortly after the holidays to fill out an application that we definitely, we took from an actual application. So they go through the process of having that experience also. And then they will have a short interview with myself, Ms. Lamos, Ms. Fortin, and a science teacher. Because there's a lot of science classes they would have to take throughout this program. So we will be set to announce to those students. And I would look forward to announcing that to Superintendent Beck, so he could share that with you of the students that are accepted. Any questions?
Bill?
Yes, I'm curious about the tutors. Is that something that the students request or something that you provide because you're monitoring progress of the students or? Can you lay that out?
Sure, it's kind of both. So we definitely are going to be closely monitoring those students. And it's to make sure we're setting them up for success. So it's going to be based on both of those things. So if a teacher, a specific teacher sees them struggling in a class, because they do have to, a Desi, a Desi mandate and part of Innovation Pathways is that students have to re, complete two AP classes through their career and their specific classes. We do give them a choice of an AP class and a science class that they have to complete. But you have to remember that students are accepted not based, not based on their academic performance. So part of the application process is making sure that every district is offering those students every support they need. So if a student's struggling, all they need to do is tell us, because we're going to be checking in on them on a regular basis, Ms. Fortin and myself. And then also the teacher sees them struggling, you know, and we're going to make it very clear to them, you know, we're, we're not, this is not punitive. This is to help you guys get through these classes. We are, that's made me think of another thing. We are going to have them re-interview every year. It's not that they have to be accepted every year, but we need to make sure that they're serious and they have the commitment that they want to continue on that path.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cassie?
I'm sorry, Cassie, I'm not hearing your question.
We lost your. Okay, I'm stable, I'm stable again. Okay. So the, the application process, I assume happened during remote learning. Can you just speak to making, I guess, what was done to make sure that it was equitable to all students during remote learning? Because I know that, you know, remote learning in general has, has brought up some inequity in education throughout.
Yep, so we put it multiple different ways. So we had it, Ms. Fortin and I presented it at a ninth grade orientation night for all students and their families. That was held in November. I'm sorry, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it was prior to Thanksgiving. And then also, we had a ninth grade, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, every Tuesday, we have a high school, all-school meeting. So we canceled the meeting for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And Ms. Fortin and I only met with ninth graders last week. So what happened is that we literally just sent the applications out on Friday. So every student was made aware of the opportunities. Ms. Fortin put information on her, she has made a Google Classroom for every single high school class. So the presentation that was a little more detailed for the students was placed on her Google Classroom. Right afterward, she took questions, I took questions. Students reached out to us, parents reached out to us. So, you know, it's, it was very disappointing because Ms. Fortin and I had really worked very hard. And last spring, we were really excited to do a huge rollout and then the world changed. So in a perfect world, you know, like if, I'm thinking positive expecting, when we get the advanced manufacturing designation, then we would look forward to this spring doing a huge, a lot of different, different informational nights held in the theater. Again, getting the newspaper, we were in the newspaper, you know, article, getting the word out that way, putting in newsletters like I have, just using as many possible ways as we can.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Principal Menard. This is really an exciting, exciting program to have in our district. And thank you and, and Ms. Fortin for all the work you've done. And I'm sure anyone else who contributed, it was really, really a great, great grant to achieve.
I want to do another plug real quick. So as we were working on this this summer, I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Fortin, Ms. Lamos and I worked very hard with the teachers. And Ms. Fortin can speak, I can't remember, she would tell me the exact year. But we knew, not only did we need to do this, but we needed to strengthen our program of studies. And we have the most robust program of studies that, according to Ms. Fortin, we've had in many years. I know it's over five. I don't remember if she told me seven or eight. So we have eight AP class offerings right now, which is the most we've had in forever. So we're really trying to market ourselves and really stand out academically in what we can offer the students from all different walks.
Thank you. I remember the presentation of the new courses when it was done in the spring was very impressive, very impressive. Thank you again.
Thank you, Toni.
Next, we have review and discussion of the school reopening process. Anything about that, Brian?
Obviously, at this particular point in time, I had sent out a notification to the community, to the school committee Monday morning that we had a, we have a positive case currently in the district. And until those, those identified close contacts receive testing in return, there's nothing that we're able to do in terms of bringing students back into the building. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern, probably through at least the remainder of this week, if not early next week, before I'd be able to consider doing something different in terms of moving more students into the building. I will say that the administrative team, and I am appreciative, Diane Ellis and each of the principals working hard to identify each of the students in our district that we would consider to be not making effective progress, struggling or under-engaged at this point. So that as we begin to get students in the building, we're going to be adding those students to our priority populations, even if it's in small doses. But we're looking at alternative ways to be able to provide services to those students as quickly as is safely possible.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Okay, in that case, the next item, review and vote on changes to the 2020, 2021 school year calendar. That calendar is in the packet. And I believe, Brian, there's just one change.
So earlier in the year when we moved the, the start of the school year for students back by 10 days to allow for the training and preparation for teachers to become acquainted with their tech, new technology, to distribute technology out to students and so forth. It was brought to my attention in a meeting, actually with Ms. Menard, that one of her administrative assistants, as they were prepping communications around report card, came to the realization that the one thing that I didn't do was change the turnaround day to be in between semesters. And so that's, it's an easy fix. I'm just asking the committee to, to take what now the turnaround day for the district, which is a day where students don't have school, is January 22nd. I'm requesting that the committee move that date back by one week to January 29th. And that will align the district calendar with the academic calendar for the distribution of report cards closing term and getting all of that information out.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you, Mike.
Second.
And Haley, a second. Any discussion of that? All those in favor?
Kimmy, I.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list of progress report on the three-year district technology plan. Sounds like, yeah.
Sounds like me. Good evening. So, um, I have the irregular task of submitting a three-year plan as opposed to just a yearly one. And basically due to the nature of technology, so that my report every year actually includes a summary of what has happened previously. So that in sharing my plan, I will actually cover the first few years. For example, starting with the first three technology plan for, the prior technology plan that was also a three-year plan wherein we actively built a robust, robust network infrastructure for safe and fast connectivity. Had the middle school, started the middle school one-to-one Chromebook program, if you still recall that. The mobile technology used for teaching and learning, provided teachers with their laptops so that they can actively teach in a mobile system and a full implementation of the MCAS, a computer-based testing. So that when 2020 came around for fiscal year, we continued to grow that one-to-one Chromebook program. We replaced the dying audio and visual equipment in the classrooms. And we also tried to replace old servers and computer systems that supported the continued operation of our schools. So that come fiscal year 2020, we also still went ahead and bought the devices for incoming middle school students. We facilitated, we wanted to, or one of my proposals was to facilitate a leased-owned program for our outgoing seniors. And I also proposed that we replace, again, our aging visual projection and amplification system, which pretty much explains what it does run in a three-year. My plans always run in a three-year program because they are, rather than doing it in one big bulk replacement, I'm able to actually spread the budget out so that we can take advantage of the differing technology and the growing and developing technology. So that for fiscal year 2021, here we went. We actually did grow our one-to-one Chromebook program from pre-K now to 12th grade. We were able to actually, you know, given their circumstances, provide for almost all of our students. And the reason why we were not able to provide for all of them was because of the shortage that had come out of this pandemic. But we still continued to start building that. We continued to replace the, both visual, the projection systems, which is basically aging projector systems. So basically, you know, when we, when I started this three-year technology plan, the, what I had planned was that through different, like, through this next three years, we were going to replace those projector systems with interactive large format displays. So the pandemic happened and it just made it my great opportunity to be able to have completed my three-year plan in one year. So we are actually have replaced all our aging projection systems with large format displays that are interactive. And tomorrow we will actually have a professional development day wherein we will be able to provide training for our teachers on how to use this interactive large format displays. The amplification systems had been pushed for next year because we, you know, did not have, the, the large format displays became our priority because we wanted to support remote and hybrid learning in the district. Also, what, the other thing that we also kind of like pushed back was to the replacement of our computer labs. That was a proposal to replace our computer labs into a next-generation flexible learning space. So that for the following school year, my plan has kind of modified plan is now to actively propose that we continue our one-to-one Chromebook program. Basically, it's really providing for the incoming student. Basically, it's really providing for the incoming students. So, for next year, when our incoming students come in, I will need that batch of Chromebooks in order to provide for them. I would also like to propose that we continue the replacement of the both, the visual projection and amplification systems. And the reason for that, this one, is that we do have some student services classrooms that we would like to also equip with large format displays, not necessarily the size that we have it for our classrooms, but be able to still provide some kind of technology for them that is, that will fit, that, that will very much fit their needs. And we also have our related arts classrooms that we would like to complete their equipment. But the amplification systems is one of the things that we actually really do need to replace for next year. And then that, and my last proposal is to actually push, still push for the flexible learning spaces. I'm sorry, I just thought this is the date that I have there. That's supposed to say fiscal year 2022. And so, I apologize for that. But I would still like to be able to bring in the flexible learning spaces because that in itself actually allows our computer labs to turn into what we call our media centers. We've learned a lot in this last six months, especially with regards to remote teaching and remote learning and being able to use technology in many different ways that we haven't even imagined. So that the flexible learning spaces will support this kind of new learning for us. So, that's basically how I've slightly modified our, the three-year plan for technology. So, I'm going to stop there and ask if there are any questions. Yes, Bill?
In, in your flexible learning situation, how do you, is that like going from a cubicle to an open classroom? Is it moving away from the old, like a language lab used to be? Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? Because I'm old and I have a short memory.
Love to, Bill. So, the thing is that the flexible learning space is exactly as you're, you're really thinking about it. It's more open. There won't be, the, the, gone are the, the cubicles that you do remember. And mind you, that we do have language labs and still have those cubicles. Gone are the heavy computer tables that, you know, will take, that have to be set there because of the wires. So that now that we're very much into mobile technology and wireless technology, we don't need to worry about those wires that need to be, to always be connected in order to get connectivity and electricity. We are going to be able to actually, them being flexible means that we actually are able to move the furniture around and be able to allow our students to work with their devices in a way that actually fits their thinking, rather than just really in a static way wherein they're just sitting in, in one place, right? There would be a lot more collaboration because it would be easier for them to actually get together, share device, share screens. Yeah, well, the, the word sharing of the screens and devices is kind of like something we can't, we haven't heard for a long time in COVID. But those are the different ways that we can actually create. So, if you really think about it, it might actually even be budget-wise, less expensive because now we're talking about furniture that's lighter, easier to move, and more open to change. So, I hope that kind of, it's really, I was hoping that I could actually show a picture of it. But then the thing is, it's like, it's so unthought of. But then there, one of the things that, one of the impetus or, or one of the things that have been happening prior to COVID was that libraries have started changing their, their, their look. So that if you actually looked at the New Hadley Library, that, that has the same concept. So, you know, a more open space and a more flexible kind of.
Anyone else?
So, I think one of the things also that, that I wanted to mention was that in our, the timely way that we had created this plan in our purchasing, the large format displays, not only did we make a purchase that was going to support the present, we actually made a purchase that will actually be sustainable. So, it was really, you know, just as Joanie was, was mentioning, right? That she's really looking at the future as well. This one allow us to also, this is a plan that actually allows us to look forward every time.
Thank you very much, Tina. Okay, next on the agenda, we need to vote on the capital projects for town meetings. And so, Joanne has included those in our packet.
I do have one thing to add to this, Jane. And that is the building condition assessment, the $7,500 for Gill, for the town of Gill. They didn't vote that to assess the Gill Elementary Building and Fiscal 21. And so, we should add that to the Fiscal 22 capital request.
Okay.
So, the items on this capital planning report include items that we had last year that weren't approved in addition to the building condition assessment findings for the two Montague buildings. Some of the work was the facade exterior at Hillcrest. That was something that we had on our radar, but that was in the report for year one. The driveway and parking lot repairs was something that came from the assessment report. Building the wall at Sheffield was on the original. The fire alarm upgrade is something that was on the report. Repaving at Sheffield, the access entrance, brick pointing, something that we had on our radar, but it was also in the report. Painting of the window trims at Sheffield, and then the various roof repairs at, at, in Sheffield. Those were things that came from the assessment reports. So, we don't know that the towns will support all of these projects, but this is where we're starting from. So, Keith is working on getting us estimates for many of these. The estimates that we're using in this initial report are from the building assessment reports. So. So, if you're ready to vote, we can.
Yes, Jimmy?
I, I have a question for Joanne. Which job is it that you were removing from Gill Elementary? I, I didn't catch it.
Oh, we're adding. So, Gill Elementary has the roof, MSBA roof. So, we will apply for MSBA if the town of Gill would like us to, again, this year in January. And we have the floor finishes, removing and replacing the floor tiles at Gill Elementary. That would be in the all-purpose room in the hallways. And then we're adding the building condition assessment, the $7,500. So, that's something that was a request in Fiscal 21 that didn't make it to town meeting. So, we will put that back in the capital request for Gill for Fiscal 22.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve these requests going forward. Do we have a second?
Did someone move it, Jane? I didn't notice that.
Yes, I believe, Bill, did you move it?
No, but I will.
Second.
Oh, did you miss that, Jane? So, Bill motioned and Mike seconded.
Okay, my, I was just unstable again. So, who did that, Cassie?
It was Bill and Mike.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
On the mic.
All right. Any other questions or discussion about that? Bill?
Oh, I noticed that the auxiliary generator is in the background here. Is that something you want to push for a little more?
We would like to have the generator there, and that would, you know, allow us to not have to close school at the Gill Elementary, sometimes when we don't have to close it at the other schools. But that's not something that the town had, that was well-received by the town in the past. So, that's on there in an out year. And I think that if we can get together with the Capitol Committee, with the town of Gill, we can hear what they think about the generator. We would love to put that on there.
Can I add another question, Jane?
Sure.
On the flooring issue, does that, is that the entire school, or is it the original building? Or do you know?
It is the all-purpose room and the hallways.
All the way down to the end of the hall?
Yes.
Because we're looking at two timeframes here. One is 1950s and the other is 1980.
Right. It would be a different type of flooring. And so, by cutting it off mid-hallway, it might look funny.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Looks unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda, we're always keeping the item of equity among the schools. Anything in particular this evening on that front? No? Okay, thank you. We'll still keep it there. Discussion about the December meeting. We did mention it last time. If we go along with our every-two-week calendar, we would be meeting on December 22nd, which is certainly a possibility. It just occurred to me, folks might like to not have a meeting that week. In which case, we could move it up to the 15th if that would work, or if there's nothing that needs our immediate action. We could wait till January. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to do that. Any thoughts on that, Brian?
No, not, I mean, nothing immediately off the top of my head. I don't think that there will be any, any update or information I certainly can send out through email. And whether the school committee feels like they, they might need to vote on something, if you wanted to hold a meeting for next week. I think it, it would be unlikely that I would have significant, significantly different information next week. It depends on what kind of business, other business you might want to consider. So, I think next week would probably be too quick. And I know that the 22nd is somewhat inconvenient for folks. Joanne, do you have any reservations about the need for us to meet sooner in terms of any of the, any outstanding warrants or anything that would need to be approved?
Yeah, approving warrants. If we were to wait until, you know, the second week of January, that's a long time to wait between paying bills. So, even if it could be some sort of a quick meeting just to approve a warrant, that would be good.
Okay. I mean, we have done that in the past. We've only had one. So, apparently, something's changed in that process that it needs.
Well, I think the way we were approving warrants was different. Where it didn't take the full school committee.
Right, right. I think you're right. That was a change we needed. So, in that case, it would probably make more sense to do the 22nd and just try to keep it a really short agenda. I looked at our usual schedule for each month and didn't see anything in particular that we usually need to do at that meeting as a rule. So, at this point, then, we'll just leave it for the 22nd, and we will try to keep it as a very short agenda. Any other ideas on that? Is that okay, everyone? Will that work? All right. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, we have two sets of minutes to approve, November 10th, 2020, and November 24th, 2020. If it's acceptable, we could approve them together. If not, we could separate them.
Motion to approve both sets.
Mike?
Second.
And second, Haley. Any discussion of said? Okay, all those in favor? Timmy, did I?
I was waiting for you to say opposed and then abstain, and I'm abstaining.
All right, thank you.
He works for the same company Jody works for, the software company?
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Any agenda requests? As usual, we'll probably be meeting next Tuesday, early evening, to do the agenda for the 22nd. If anyone has any suggestions, that's fine. Otherwise, we will try to keep it fairly short. And if anyone has anything now they'd like us to put on, just let us know. Otherwise, we'll be meeting on the 22nd, and the next one after that is January 12th. And seeing no other things listed, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Haley.
Second.
And Bill? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Nighty night.
Night.